Technically, I'd share with Mark, but I talk this way, so, you know.
Feel free.
Sorry, I don't care anymore.
Are we good?
Is that light on?
Yeah, how come the lights aren't on in here? Supervisors meeting. Before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and will be posted on YouTube. There will be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. And there will be a three minute time limit on all public comments. Besides that, I will now call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Well, I'd also like to announce that the board had an executive session today, October ninth, at one P M. To discuss personnel issues. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the September eleventh meeting. And the September twenty fifth and October second workshop meetings.
Motion for the approval of the September eleventh, September twenty fifth and October second meetings.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, on to the reports. Chief Alexander.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of September twenty twenty-three, Euclid Township Police Department officers documented one thousand one hundred eighty-six entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued ninety-five traffic citations. They investigated thirty-eight motor vehicle crashes and they arrested twenty-four individuals. Additionally, for the month of September, the department members conducted two motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in four hundred thirty-three commuter commercial motor vehicles being weighed, five of which were found to be overweight. During the details, the officers also performed eight inspections requiring five vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. The officers were assisted by a member of the Upper Euclid Township Police Department during one of those details. Sergeant McBride also conducted five additional commercial motor vehicle inspections during his normal workdays, resulting in one driver being placed out of service. Year to date, the officers have documented ten thousand one hundred sixty-eight entries in our call reporting system. They've arrested one hundred thirty-nine individuals. They've issued one thousand one hundred thirty-seven traffic citations, three hundred thirty-six written warnings. They've investigated two hundred fifty-nine motor vehicle crashes. And they've weighed five thousand seven hundred eighty-four commercial motor vehicles. And I'm happy to report they had no Narcan administrations for the month.
Thank you. Sue Bernhardt, Treasurer.
Thank you. For the month of, through the month of September, in the general fund, we've collected just a little over ninety percent of our budgeted revenues and have spent just a little over seventy percent of our budgeted expenditures.
Okay, great. Thank you. Scott Greenlee. Public Works.
Thank you. For the month of September, the daily average flow to the Downingtown treatment plant was one million three hundred ninety thousand three hundred and fifty-seven gallons per day. And there were no new connections at either the Eagleview or Darrow service areas. For the month of September, the township received five point six eight inches of rain. The normal for September is four point one inches. Year to date, we're about one point five inches over average for the year. The Public Works Department responded to a hundred and fourteen P A one calls for the month of September. The department was out on multiple areas to repair sinkholes on Beach Street, Phillips Road, Bean Tree Run, Lakeview and Crump's Crump Road. The outfall for the Marchwood Road Colbert, which was heavily damaged during our July rain event, was repaired and stabilized with large rock on either side. A section of the walking trail, filament and downforce that was damaged during that same July event was dug out and new asphalt was installed. The crews completed routine maintenance and excuse me. Routine maintenance of equipment as well as inspections for township vehicles.
Thank you. Fire marshal report.
Yes, for the month of September, the building department issued eighty permits for construction activities. A total of a hundred and twenty inspections were conducted. A total of sixteen fire code inspections were conducted. Thirty-five use and occupancy certificates were issued. And the fire marshal responded to thirteen incidents during working hours and conducted three burning complaint investigations.
Okay, thank you. Lionville Fire Company.
For the month of September, Lionville Fire Company responded to sixty-nine incidents. Forty-one of them being in Euclid, fourteen in Upper Euclid, four in West Pike Lynn and ten in other municipalities. Total year to date is five hundred twenty-eight.
And Euclid ambulance.
Good evening. Thank you again for your continued relationship. You guys have been fantastic. September, we had a hundred and fifty nine-one-one dispatches within Euclid Township. Year to date is eleven hundred and seventy. We have a program coming up, a community day on October fourteenth, if you guys aren't aware. That will be doing seatbelt checks, shredding and different things. Tough truck, stuff like that. And then we've got Designer Bag Bingo coming up on November fifth to raise some money. So again, thank you, guys.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the reports as presented?
So moved.
My second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Just have one comment. I was very excited to be present for the swearing in of our newest police officer in Euclid Township earlier this month, so I hope the community will join me if they see Officer Kennedy Green out doing his patrol work and very excited to have additional officers joining the department.
Are there any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public about the reports? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, on to business. First, what is the score for the Phillies game?
Three.
Three, nothing. Okay, everyone can relax. We'll go on to the first item of business. Line painting? Permission to bid with West Goshen, East Goshen and West Town.
Right, so this is pretty straightforward. Historically, we partnered with West Goshen, Ocean, East Ocean and West Town townships for our line painting. This includes the striping down the middle of the road as well as our crosswalks. So what we're asking for this evening is permission to join them in their bid so that we can get the best price for the townships.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
What? Make the motion.
Oh, I motion. Grant permission to bid with the West Goshen, East Goshen and West Town for line painting.
On second.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item. Adoption of the Euclid Township Police Manual.
Yes, thank you. Occasionally, there's a need to make changes to the police department duty manual. And in doing so, we would then ask for a readoption of the manual once that is complete. So before you is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, which is a resolution to adopt the Euclid Township Police Department policy manual. Once again, after making some changes.
Okay. Want to get a motion?
All motion for the adoption of Euclid Township Police Manual. Resolution number twenty twenty-three eighteen.
A second.
Are there any comments or questions? Just want to comment that I appreciate the administration at the police department keeping our policy manual updated. Are there any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item, the overlook three M planning module. I think we have someone from Gannett Fleming here that can talk about that.
Boydin from Gannett Fleming. Gannett has been helping the township through this process to take the overlook pumping station offline. I'm going to turn it over to Ed. He's going to walk us through a brief presentation.
Okay, great. Welcome, Ed. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. And I'll be quick. So I know sewage facilities planning isn't everybody's favorite topic, so. Just briefly, the Act five thirty-seven is what we're talking about. Act five thirty-seven was adopted by the state legislature back in nineteen sixty-six. Requires all municipalities to keep up to date sewage facilities plan. We're here specifically to talk about a supplement to the township's five thirty-seven plan for the overlook pumping station. The overlook pumping station was constructed back in nineteen ninety-four by the Hankin Group. So Scott, if you could. No, that's, thank you. And we looked at three alternatives to taking it offline. And the reason we want to do that is that this, the station, as I mentioned, is nearing thirty years old. So it's, it's past its life. So we're, we're on borrowed time. It has a capacity of about a hundred and forty-four thousand gallons a day. Flow, the pumps currently around thirty-two thousand gallons a day. The benefit of taking it offline is to reduce the township's operation and maintenance costs and then also that potential capital cost of having to replace it. So it serves primarily residential area of the Eagleview development. There are a couple of commercial lots, but it's primarily residential. These discussions, believe it or not, started back around two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. The Hankin Group has been party to this and the, the, the three M module value at the three alternatives. The first alternative we couldn't do because you can't serve the area by gravity. So that, that alternative was sort of abandoned right off the, right off the get-go. The second one is to eliminate the station and pump it to the Downingtown area regional authority service area. And I'll, I'll show you that service area in a minute. And then the third obviously is just doing nothing. So the selected alternative is number two, to abandon the station and divert the flows to the Dara service area. So the, if you, for everybody's education here, if you don't know already, the greenish area on that slide of, this is the township, obviously, the greenish area all flows to the Downingtown area regional authority system. The white for area A is the Eagle View service area. So the overlook pumping station, if you can see is right there. Scott had his arrow on it a minute ago, right there. That's the overlook pumping station right on the, the edge of the, of the system. And the topography of that land naturally flows towards the Dara service area, so it makes sense. So in, in partnership with, with the Hankin Group, the three M was prepared. The next slide will show you the construction that's proposed. The Hankin Group would take the station offline, construct a gravity sanitary sewer extension on the Penn and Packer and over to the station that would connect to the existing Shimona interceptor. So that, that's, that's what this, this whole purpose of this planning exercise is. Is, and the next is the schedule, which we are now about three quarters of the way down. This is the Euclid Township and then Upper Euclid will be following. We would ask for a resolution from the Board of Supervisors approving the planning module so it can be submitted to D E P and then the project can be, can be started. Happy to answer any question.
Is there, can I get a motion?
Sure. Motion for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three nineteen overlooked three M planning module.
A second.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Not for me, no.
This plan makes perfect sense to me and I think it will keep us in good shape for the future for everyone, so we can keep flushing our toilets and not worry about anything.
Yeah, and Scott is, is, has us busy working on additional five thirty-seven planning and will be back to talk with you soon for the rest of the area.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the public about this plan? No. All right, then I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ed, for being here. The next item of business is Eagleview Town Center two, phase three preliminary final land development plan approval.
Yes, so as you're aware, Hankin had submitted and had gone through the conditional use process for Eagleview Town Center two. Wednesday night at the planning commission meeting, phase three was discussed. Phase three is located on Constitution Drive, Eagleview Boulevard and Route one hundred. The proposal is to construct a three-story office building, approximately forty thousand square feet and a hundred and thirty-five parking spaces. There are a few waivers that were requested. One for preliminary final land development to be combined together. One for a plan scale to be equal to or larger than one inch equals fifty feet for one page in order to get the whole plan on one page. Similarly, another scale waiver for larger than one inch equals eighty feet and then for the ability to use stormwater pipes smaller than eighteen inches in diameter. The planning commission did make a motion to recommend all the waivers and the plan contingent on the township consultants review letters as well as obtaining all the state and county permits and approvals. So Mr. Fisher is here if you have any questions. But if you're willing to approve, there is a resolution number twenty dash twenty-three that would solidify the approval.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty Eagleview Town Center two, phase three preliminary final land development plan.
Well, second.
Were there any comments or questions? From the board? Are there any comments or, oh, do you have a question? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, Eagleview Town Center two, phase four.
Yeah, so phase four was submitted along with phase three. Phase four consists of two apartment buildings with sixty-three units each for a total of a hundred and twenty-six units and two hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. This is located across Constitution Drive from the proposed office building. The same waivers were requested for this plan as well. The planning commission did also make a recommendation for this plan and for the waivers as well. One of the comments that did come up at the planning commission was for the request to use biodegradable stormwater controls, which Mr. Fisher kindly agreed to. What Mr. Fisher said. So the planning commission did make a motion to recommend as well with that additional request. And again, if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one would be for the approval of phase four.
Get a motion.
All motion for the approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three twenty-one Eagleview Town Center phase four preliminary final land development plan.
A second.
Any comments or questions? From the board?
No.
Nope. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I seventy-six Trade Center. Eleven thirty North Pottstown Pike requests for extended working hours. That pretty much explains itself.
It does. I know the applicants are here from Austin Construction, although I did receive a letter requesting permission to work from one A M. to seven P M. The anticipated start date would be the middle of November. This would be for approximately four to six weeks in order to allow for concrete slab pours. I would turn it over to Austin Construction for any additional information or questions that you have.
Yeah, do you want to come up and just explain the nature of the request?
Hi, yes, Anthony Feagle with Austin Construction, project operations manager. So we're just requesting this extended time so we can get our concrete trucks in at a reasonable hour, not reasonable for you guys, but reasonable for keeping traffic off the roadways during business hours and school hours. So we feel it'd be a lot safer and also lessen the duration of the whole project. And it's just for the concrete slab pour for the building.
So the duration without the extension would be, you're saying it's going to last four to six weeks?
Yeah, so it'd almost be double, be eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve?
Yeah.
If you stayed within the noise ordinance.
Correct.
Time frame. Okay. Is anyone else? Was there a motion? No. Okay.
So I have a question. You're asking from one, from one A M. And your stated purpose is to reduce traffic on the, the roads during rush hour?
Correct.
Right. So, I mean,
thanks.
I guess I'm wondering if, if one A M. Is the, you know, it, how much of that time is really necessary to get those kinds of vehicles into, onto the site?
So roughly, you're talking about a hundred, a hundred and fifty truckloads of concrete that would take place between one A M. And probably seven A M. So after seven o'clock, those trucks would be off the road then. And they would continue finishing the concrete at that point. So it's really just for the transportation part of it that we're, you know, it's critical to get them off the roadways.
I'm sorry, just a question. You had said the anticipated duration in your letter is four to six weeks. This letter states that it would be approximately ten days faster with the permission. Did you say it would be eight to, it would be double?
You'd probably, I would say you'd almost double your. Yeah.
So it wouldn't just be ten days?
No, no, it'd be a lot more. Yeah, yeah, significantly more.
Is there a reason why you put ten days in the letter?
I'm not sure where the ten days came from, actually. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you're basically, like I said, it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty truckloads a day. So if we were to not have those hours to work that, you'd be cutting those hours in half. So basically, the production would be in half.
And, and you're planning on starting in November, you said?
If everything goes well, yeah. We have to still get all our legal stuff done first.
And how, how sure are you that you're going to start in November?
I think it will be in November sometime, may not be in the middle of it, might be towards the end of it, but we would definitely, you know, iteration would be the same.
Can you, are you capable, I, I don't know much about concrete pouring and about temperature and the sensitivity to temperature. I mean, do you have a problem if it gets to be cold in November this?
Yeah, I'll let foreseen answer that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm getting, I'm trying to get an idea of when your actual start date is and how long it actually is going to take.
Yeah, so the duration will stay the same just based on when we actually start. And if we could start earlier, we would start, you know, November first, if we could.
Is, where's the concrete being transported from?
It's going to be local within.
Okay, so it's going to be coming up Route one hundred or one thirteen? I prefer to have a motion and then public comment.
Okay.
Is there a motion on the board, on the table for us to consider?
I'll go ahead and motion for the denial of where are we here? The I seventy-six Trade Center request for extended working hours.
A second.
Okay, so are there any more comments or questions about denying this approval?
I would just add, in addition to the questions that were asked already, that I received a significant number of emails and outreach from the community asking for the denial of this request. I'm not convinced that there will not be noise disturbances in the area. We're going into the winter months. There's not going to be leaves on the trees. And as much as I want to make sure that this is moving about in the way that it's supposed to, I'm just not convinced that it's really in the best interest of the community.
Are there any comments or questions from the public about this denial of this request? If you could.
No.
No. Sorry. If you could just come up and state your name, please.
Hi, Kevin Lambert, Euclid Township President. I don't know why this keeps coming up or how many times we're going to have to hear variations of the same request. Are you able to comment on that?
Um, well, I mean, this is a separate situ, I mean, the original, you're talking about because they already asked for waiver for the land disturbance, earth disturbance activities?
Yes.
I think it's just based on whatever their activities, they're coming back to ask for another one for a different activity. So I think it's related to the activity.
What I hear is we might start in November. We're not sure. Weather could affect it. Maybe it won't. Might add ten days, could double it. Doesn't sound good. Well, thank you for a motion today. I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Is there another comment?
Hi, Rich Siegel, Harshaw Drive. It appears this is being done. They say for safety. But it's being done to compress time. They could also spread it out over a longer period of time during working hours away from you know, the, the early times in the, in the morning and the afternoon, say ten to four, six hours a day. You're not commuting times. It might broaden the schedule. And maybe that's a disadvantage to them, but that's not our problem. Their schedule lay on. And they made the schedule. If they're having trouble hitting the schedule, that's their problem. We shouldn't have to come and then suffer the the physical and health consequences of the noise at night, the loss of sleep and, and the, the effects that that may cause. So I certainly support the denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the public?
Michael Taylor, four sixty-two Creekside Drive. While I would prefer that there be absolutely no building being done at Happy Day Farms, let me make sure that is absolutely clear. But from the limited amount of testimony that we just had here, my understanding is, and I hope I'm wrong here, is that these trucks, these hundred to a hundred and fifty trucks will be coming up one thirteen at eight A M. In the morning, going through school zones. I live right at probably the most dangerous intersection in all Chester County where Peck Road is. So if that is something that is to be considered, I'm not, like I said, I'm not, I wish there was no noise there. But I'm just concerned about safety there. People are trying to get across those streets. People are walking around and they bring a hundred and fifty cement trucks coming up one thirteen during the middle of the morning hours or even at the end of the day, could be a very dangerous situation. So I think it might be best for this board maybe to ask a couple more questions as to what kind of protections we can have for the residents along one thirteen. Thank you.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
While, while we're on that, so I, I think Mr. Taylor makes a, a good point. You say a hundred, a hundred and twenty. Is that on, what, what kind of density of traffic are we, are we talking about spread throughout the day approximately evenly? Are you talking about there's going to be areas of concentration where you're getting them on the site in, you know, a big block? Give, give me an idea.
Hi, my name, excuse me, my name is Rich Futterer. I'll be the concrete sub on the project. So with the current work hours, the ready mix supplier would need to put twenty-six to twenty-eight trucks on the road and cycle them however many times to get the, you know, thousand yards of concrete. So and, and it would be starting at seven A M. They would probably load the trucks at six, start to get on the road six thirty, arrive at the job site, seven o'clock. That one-way trip at that time of the day is about thirty-five to forty minutes. If we were able to pour concrete through the night, we would cut that down to about twenty trucks. And the hours and that, that trip from the plant to the site would be roughly fifteen to twenty minutes. And so you have fewer trucks on the road, less hours.
And so you have fewer trucks on the road, less hours, not when kids are going to school, not when, you know, the the residents are going to work. Um, and once the concrete's done, it'll be down by seven o'clock in the morning. Those trucks are off the road someplace else, not, you know, bothering this project. It's something-
There's no concrete pouring during during the day from eight to seven?
Well, there will be concrete poured at some point during the day, but not at that volume. We're talking about, you know, we're not gonna have a hundred and fifty trucks cycling out.
But you're not having twenty or fifty trucks cycling, you're saying there's gonna be twenty to twenty-five, twenty to twenty-six or so is the numbers I heard, cycling.
Yes.
Not a hundred and twenty at a time.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so you have twenty, let's say you have twenty to twenty-five coming from Boot Road to the um, Happy Days Farm site at any given time.
Right, we'll have twenty or less trucks.
In any twenty-minute.
Through the night.
Yeah.
But through the, you know, the rush hour, seven o'clock to, you know, whenever, two o'clock in the afternoon when the concrete's done, we'll need more trucks. It'll be close to twenty-six to twenty-eight trucks. Because of traffic and time to cycle back. That makes any sense.
It does, thank you. I clarified some things.
I'm not sh, uh, I'm not sure how many fewer trucks will be on the road with the extended. It's hard to tell. I mean, your letter is asking for working between one AM and seven PM, so the trucks are gonna be on one thirteen at any point of the day between one AM and seven PM. That doesn't really cut down on the traffic during school time as far as I can tell, unless you say in your letter, you're not gonna be running concrete trucks during rush hour between, let's say, six-thirty, what time does high school start? Geez.
They must start around six-thirty. They're picking up, perhaps.
Between six-thirty and nine. I mean, that's really when there's heavy bus traffic on one thirteen. And then two thirty to four, right? I'm sorry, my kids all graduated already.
The bounces, yes. That's totally right.
Um, so you can't really tell us that you won't have cement. The fact of the matter is, this project's gonna require cement trucks on one thirteen and throughout the day.
Farm trucks.
Mm-hmm.
The hour extension will be far enough trucks, whether it's significant concrete or debris. Maybe there are two or three trucks finishing up the job. There won't be a hundred and six trucks on the road cycling.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Go ahead, have a comment.
Michael Heine, forty-nine oh-two Caracord. Um, I guess the only thing I wanted to mention is I drive Cherie every day, eight fifteen, and I come home around five fifteen every morning, including this morning, a federal holiday. There's twenty, twenty-five vehicles in that parking lot and every day at five o'clock, it's a ghost town. They're not even using the time they have. I know it's the earth movers, not the contract people, but they're not even using the time they have under the ordinance right now. Why should we give them different and extended time? That's, I guess, my only opinion, so.
All right, thank you. Hi.
Um, just a quick comment. I mean, I find it ironic.
Sorry, could you just state your name?
Oh, sure, Adrian Myers, uh, Byers Road, and I find it ironic that we're so fussing about a couple hundred trucks when after this monstrosity is built, we've made our bed, now we have to lie in it and we're so concerned about children and the schools. And once this is built, I think this will be good practice to see just how this is gonna turn into what it's, what it is. I mean, I, you know, this is so awesome that they're concerned about the traffic of one thirteen and one hundred when it's all said and done and built and now we have hundreds and hundreds of tractor trailers, not just cement trucks. It it's just, it's just stomach turning. It truly is what's gonna happen to our community. So thank you for upholding it and if it comes next month, I'll be back in the next month and the next month. And so I appreciate you at least considering not having this happen all during the night.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Were there any other comments?
First angle, Euclid Township. Um, can you refresh my memory as to when the workday under the ordinance now ends? At what time? Time, what time are they allowed to?
It's ends at seven PM or a half an hour after sunset, I believe. Yeah, correct.
Seven PM, okay.
Or half an hour after sunset. So in other words, when the time changes and wintertime, it is, does it become earlier than that, than seven PM? It can't be any.
Right, thank you. Um, it seems clear from my vantage point, I can say safety and maybe safety is an issue, but it's much more of a business decision. You know, time is money and all of that. Um, and the amount of disturbance that would be created for, you know, some benefit, um, be large, especially over the holidays. You know, that would make us right here, I guess. Um, but more importantly, I I think you said, and I can't remember verbatim, but you said something to the effect that, you know, we have a consistent practice here of keeping traffic off the roads late at night unless there's like an extenuating circumstance that you might consider. That's, that's the practice that we uphold in Euclid Township and so, and last month, we applauded that. And I want to continue to applaud upholding that practice of keeping our community quiet overnight, um, which you so eloquently put last time and I so inelegantly put just now. Okay, so my vote is to deny.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments from or questions from the public? Are there any more comments from the board? I'm gonna go ahead and take a vote then. All in favor of denying the request for extended work hours?
Aye.
My motion passes unanimously. Uh, the next item of business are the hearings. The first hearing is Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs. Resoning, wait, are they here?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry.
So we, um, this is a, this is the continuation of the uh, hearing on the rezoning application of Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs, two one seven, two one nine and two two one, Dallin Forge Road. Uh, I've been in discussions with the the Church's Council. Um, they were, uh, are working on getting us a plan that shows um, what the proposal is going to look like. Um, they're still working on that. Um, we've agreed, they uh, agreed and and we agreed that it was better to, rather than try and rush it and and get it in for tonight's meeting or proceed without it, to to push the hearing further until November, um, which explains why there, there's not many folks here from the church. Um, but um, so that's, so that's, we're, we're working on um, trying to to get something together where we can um, at least see if there's something that's um, could be agreeable to present to the board. Um, and they're working on it and we're working on it and hopefully we'll be able to continue at the next meeting. Uh, so we're gonna, it's gonna be, the hearing is gonna be rescheduled for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. At seven PM here at the Township Building.
Seven thirty? Wait, right, it's gonna be at seven thirty, is that what you said?
Seven, seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty.
Um, okay, so the next uh, hearing we have is the Tilson Infrastructure and PA Turnpike Commission on communications facility.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is Tilson Infrastructure in Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission, looks at three twelve, twelve telecommunications facility. This is the conditional use hearing that was started at uh, last uh, meetings hearing. Um, this is another one, they um, Tilson Infrastructure appeared before the zoning hearing board. Uh, and during that hearing, uh, my understanding is that they asked that that hearing be continued until December. Um, and then they requested that this hearing um, for conditional use be um, continued until, again, the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty meeting of the township. Um, so that's uh, what's before the, the board tonight leaves the request for continuance um, on the hearing.
So we have to vote on the continue?
You don't, you don't need to. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, we're, we're gonna just reschedule for uh, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM at the Township Building.
Okay. Well, that concludes the business of tonight's meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and run through the announcements before we open the meeting to public comments. The following meetings will be held at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. Uh, October twelfth, the Historical Commission will meet here at seven, I mean, not here, seven thirty PM at Cadwalader House. October sixteenth, Board of Supervisors will have our workshop meeting here at twelve noon. October eighteenth, the zoning hearing board will meet at seven PM to discuss a front yard variance for three oh one Colonial Drive. On October nineteenth, the Environmental Advisory Council Workshop will have their workshop meeting at seven PM. Uh, October twentieth, Euclid Township Industrial Development Authority will meet here at nine AM. Um, uh, November first, the Planning Commission will meet at seven thirty PM. November sixth will be our next Board of Supervisors workshop meeting at noon. November sixth will be Park and Rec Committee at seven thirty PM. November ninth, Historical Commission at seven thirty PM at the Cadwalader House. And November thirteenth is the next uh, monthly Board of Supervisors meeting at seven thirty PM. Um, also, Election Day is November eleventh, so just, I mean, November seventh. Sorry, November seventh, gosh, don't get the wrong date. Um, okay, I'll go ahead and open up the meeting to public comments. Oh.
I I just wanna remind everybody that's joining us virtually that we're no longer taking public comment. I saw there were a few raised hands. I just wanted to reinforce that.
Okay, hopefully they heard that. Okay, okay. Um, is there anybody in the public that wants to raise an issue or have a question? No, everyone just wants to go watch the Phillies game. Um, all right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I do, I have one comment, which is it's the, it's the bottom of the sixth and the the Phillies are up, uh, they were up four to nothing. Now the uh, Atlanta just scored a run, so it's.
Oh, okay, I really rush home and cheer. Okay, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Travel safely, everybody. Have a good night.